So today we'll have four scheduled, actually five scheduled speakers from different areas in our community. Some are actually from out of town, others are from local areas and organizations. And then after each speaker, there'll be a seven to 10 minute speech, but then after each speaker, there'll be about five minutes time for you guys to come and ask questions if you have any. At the end of all the five speakers, we'll have a general assembly where we can, anyone can ask questions in regards to any one of the speakers. That concludes the first half. The second half is kind of open to you, the audience. We'll be making some general announcements from some organizations who are in the audience. But it can also enable a time where you and the audience can come and ask a question or kind of pitch an idea. Maybe you've been thinking about doing a gay and lesbian bowling league or something like that. You can pitch an idea. And so that's, it kind of leaves it open to the audience and we, you know, kind of rely on your support. So with that said, let's begin with our first speaker. It's Ren Asene, I believe, that's how it's said. And she'll be speaking about the New Party. So Ren?
Well, I can't see any of you. So I'm Ren Asene and might have met many of you in the crowd, although can't really see friendly faces. You're out there? Alright, that's good to know. So I don't really have a planned speech, but what I thought I'd do was first tell you a little bit about myself, a little bit about my interests, why I'm really excited about being a member of the New Party, what it means to me, and talk a little bit about kind of the political situation in this country. And then really open it up for questions and answers, maybe about what we're doing here locally or what's going on at a national level. Let's see. I moved to Missoula about six years ago and came out right after that. Missoula's a really friendly place to be at, that's great. And had been somewhat politically active prior to that, been working with, a little bit with the Democratic Party, doing voter registration, things like that in college. But never really felt like politics was something that was about me. I always felt like, that's politics, that's over there, that doesn't really, that's not about my life, that's not something that, that I should put my energy into. And got to Missoula and, and decided, hey, this is a great town, you know, it's a great sense of community, and wanted to get a little bit more involved. And some folks were running for a city council race, some friendly people that I knew, and thought, hey, I'm gonna get involved, you know, work on this person's campaign. And through that, I got to know a little bit more about the New Party. We had just gotten started that summer, really after the presidential election, folks had gotten together and had seen the rise of the religious right and their organizing power through really doing a grassroots-based organizing strategy. They were organizing, you know, in their local communities, taking over school boards, taking over city councils, and really starting to impact and build a movement that now what you're seeing is, you know, a huge effect of that movement in our federal government. And, and that's really scary to me when I see that happening, because I think, I don't think I'm the only one out here with these progressive values, you know, I'm not the only one out here that believes that healthcare, that we should all have access to healthcare. I don't think that I'm the only one out here believing that we shouldn't be discriminated against in our work. So when I started getting involved with the New Party, I really saw it as a local effort, and that really excited me, because it wasn't something about running, you know, supporting Bill Clinton, or something that I couldn't really engage in. It was about local politics. And it was really a coalition effort of folks, there was environmentalists at the tables, there were queers, there were feminists, there were folks from the union movement, there were, you know, folks from disability, there's lots of low-income folks involved. And it was really a coalition effort of folks coming back together to say, we're all working on our issues and we're doing a good job. You know, Missoula's, you know, I think we have the highest per capita of nonprofit organizations that I've ever seen, you know, folks on every issue working here. But we weren't really working together to take control. So what you were seeing was a real, a more conservative city council or other real conservative views that were shaping, you know, our politics for the community. And starting to think about maybe how we could change that. One of the things that I began to work on right away was the, the housing discrimination. I'm a low-income housing developer here in Missoula, developing affordable housing. And, you know, when I would go to fight for, you know, on homeless issues about panhandling, or going to fight for, for different issues at the city council, there weren't a lot of friendly faces there. And that surprised me, because I thought, we're the majority here, you know, why don't we have more of a majority here on city council? So got involved, working with this coalition, and really saw a group of folks who are really committed to issues coming together and hashing it out, you know, having that political conversation locally about what we could do. In that time, we've worked on a lot of different issues. We really have a grassroots focus, so really trying to go door knocking, find out what people are concerned about, and work on those issues. With the housing discrimination, one of the things that was really affecting me, I was living with my partner, my girlfriend at the time, and we had a roommate, and the three of us were living together. And that was against the law. You know, that, when our city ordinance had said that only two unrelated folks, that no more than two more, two related folks could live together. So because we weren't married, although we were committed partners, we weren't, we were illegal by city ordinance. And that was starting to affect people, because the property management companies were starting to, you know, investigate, okay, who's living here, because they were realizing that is getting more and more focused in the community. We were looking at issues of affordable housing and open space. And one of the things that we've really worked hard on is to create forums. So having a place where, when there's issues in the community, hey, let's put it out to the folks who live here to talk about issues that they're concerned about. And open space and affordable housing was starting to create real, this polarized debate, well, if you have open space, you can't have affordable housing. So we really brought that debate together and, and had a huge community forum downtown, and a lot of folks showing up talking about how those two issues actually overlap, and how they're both about the quality of life and how we need both of those things in our community. And from that, a lot of folks started to work on the open space campaign and got that passed. And it was really exciting, because I've been involved since about 93, and now we have, you know, a lot of great city council folks elected to office, been working on other campaigns. It's really great to see that, you know, it can, you can be successful and that you can build coalitions. You know, we work strongly with, some of the folks in the Democratic Party have, you know, we have strong support from Democrats, a lot of, you know, a lot of the folks who are in the New Party have been involved as Democratic activists for a long time, and coming together to say, okay, how do we push a progressive slate? How do we work on local issues and, and really take back our community? Because we are the majority, you know. I think sometimes we get scared of our issues or think, you know, boy, you know, it's just me that feels this way. And I think the more you get involved, the more you realize that we really are the majority, we're out there, and, and that that's not something to be scared of. And that politics is about all of us, that we can affect political change if we get involved, and especially on a local level. I mean, when you go out and you realize a city council race can be won by, you know, in the last election, eight, eight votes. You know, we lost a really progressive seat, a really wonderful city council member, and that was over eight votes. And, you know, after that election, about 10 folks came up to her and said, you know, I just thought you were gonna win, and I didn't vote. And, you know, that's, that's really touching to some of us, because, you know, when you're out there knocking on the doors and trying to get people out to vote, and they think, oh, it doesn't really matter, you know, they may be progressive, they may be, it doesn't really matter, it's all the same thing. And I think we're trying to say it's not the same thing, and you can have access to your political face. I mean, we can, we can all have access to the political structure. A couple other things to talk about. Money, money and politics. When I start to look at the Democrats and the Republicans, and I start to look at national politics, you know, I get really scared. I really, I start to think, this isn't about politics. You know, we were founded, when I started to read more about politics, the more active I got, the more I wanted to investigate what politics was about. You know, I started to look back and, and started to feel hopeless, you know, started to feel like, wow, there's, there's no chance here, you know, it's not, it's not people running our government anymore, it's corporations. You know, it's folks with money who are able to get folks elected, who are running, you know, who are running politics. Because when you look at surveys, who wants healthcare? We all want access to healthcare. And yet, we can't get that move forward, because we don't have the ability to move, to move political leaders in a direction. And why not? Because of lobbying and because of the money that's going in to politics that doesn't allow us as citizens to have access to politics. And we should be, this is democracy. You know, each of us is supposed to have a vote, and each of us is supposed to be, be able to have a political voice. And yet, we're not represented. And so to me, the thing that's really exciting about the New Party, it's about taking back my voice and saying, hey, I care about my community, and my voice is important, and I'm gonna change the way that things are happening in this country. And, and I think the big step there is campaign finance reform. We're working here on a local effort to get campaign finance reform. What we started to see is, after having some real success, to get good progressives elected to office, to start, you know, hammering at issues like growth management, how do we grow, how do we build, how do we stay affordable, how do we stay affordable to everyone in this room? You know, we did a housing expo for work several years ago, and did a whole housing analysis of who lives in our community, what incomes we're at, and what's being built in our community. And, you know, it's just one example of the economic disparity that's happening in this country, where, you know, most of us are kind of here, right? We're struggling, $8 an hour, $10 an hour, maybe if we're lucky. And the housing that's being built is not being built for the folks that can afford it. It's being built for other folks who aren't living in our community right now. So how do we start to match, you know, having affordability play a part in that? And, and I think that's just one, one way, you know, for me, it's housing, looking at housing justice issues, thinking about growth, thinking about what we're doing here locally. I know folks in the environmental movement think about that when they're thinking about New Party. And I was just talking with Kathy about what can we do with, you know, queer issues? And, you know, is there a way to fight to get, you know, nondiscrimination here locally? Sure. You know, why don't we work on a city ordinance? Why don't we work on a county ordinance? You know, we can take back our community and start to send a message about what we care about. I think overall in the nation, what you're seeing is a real polarized economy, a dropout of the middle class. This isn't new, you can look at all the statistics, I think people are really familiar with that analysis, when you start to see that even Clinton, you know, supposedly this great progressive Democrat, he, you know, he's, you know, not supporting our issues, but he's not supporting a lot of the issues that we care about. It's not just, it's not just nondiscrimination, which you would think would be a pretty easy one. Hey, we shouldn't discriminate. You know, you think that that would be pretty obvious. But it's really an economic analysis, where you start to see that, that with his latest tax package, you know, eighty-some percent of the tax breaks went to folks in the top 20% echelon of, of the economy. And you start to see that we're not represented as an economy. I mean, if you just look at the economic split, you see a dropout of the middle class, you're seeing a stronger and stronger polarization. If you look at other governments, if you look at something like Mexico, where 3% of the population has all the money and everyone else is really poor, it's like you see the US kind of tracking farther and farther towards this economy, where it's, you know, a complete split in the, in, in the economy. And really, I think the New Party has had a great national focus. We've been running living wage campaigns across the country, trying to look at the economy to say, hey, you know, we all have a stake in this economy, we can help drive it. You know, there's a big shift that happened in the economic analysis, and kind of the economic theory back in the early 70s, where before that, you know, it was always thought, you know, the big idea was that, hey, you give people more money, they spend more money in the economy, it drives the economy to then produce more. So if I, you know, if I was making $6 an hour, working at Bernice's, you know, I'm just barely being able to survive. If I'm making $7.50 an hour, I'm not putting that money away into retirement, I'm spending that money in my local economy. And of course, then the economy is strengthened by that. So that was the economic theory that used to drive our politics. And now it's driving down into low wage, into the low wage sector, it's saying, no, we gotta compete, it's about globalization, we gotta compete. And we're trying to say, hey, you can take the high road and still be successful. You know, you don't have to give all the environmental breaks and the labor breaks, and, and who are you hurting? You're hurting all of us. So I think as a nation, we need to come together and look at the economic situation that's happening and realize that, that we're at a real disadvantage, and that we all need to fight to take back the economy and take control of, of what's happening, so that wages, you know, people should be able to live on, on their wages. People shouldn't, you know, if you look at, look at Montana economy, folks are being able to survive, because they have two jobs, they have three jobs, they're working part-time, they don't have healthcare, you know, they're needing to rely on things like Partnership Health Center or other things, just to be able to survive. And, and this isn't the American dream. You know, folks that graduate from college, all of a sudden don't have the hope of, I'm absolutely gonna have a job when I'm done with college. I mean, it's a real scary economy, and I think in that, what you start to see is gay bashing, you start to see blaming welfare recipients. They're the problem of our economy. And they're not the problem, we're not the problem with the economy. The problem with the economy is looking at corporate salaries, looking at, you know, who's, who's making the money here in our economy, and trying to really look at that and focus on that aspect to say, hey, we can take back and have more fairness. And I think that's what we're really fighting for, is fairness in the economy. And we can do it. I mean, the right wing has been able to do it, they've been able to organize, they've been able to start locally, start on school boards, get their agendas passed, you know, looking at things, just looking at birth control, you know, now, you know, all the federal money that's going into that is, is about, you know, abstinence, instead of giving people all of the full information. I mean, if you look at any, if you look at any one of our issues, you start to see where they've been successful in pushing forward their agenda. And we need to fight back and, and come together as a coalition and fight back and, and start to, to realize that we can have a political platform as well, that is, that is broad and that is effective. So I just kind of wrap up, I know folks might have questions. How many folks here have heard of the New Party here in Missoula? Alright. You might have heard stuff about us, you might hear things in the newspaper, a lot of things are reported incorrectly, so I'm just gonna give you a quick spiel. The Missoula New Party's been around since about 93. We have elected a lot of really good folks to city council, really elect progressive members. I'm gonna read you our principle. Folks always ask me about nondiscrimination. We have a real commitment to democracy, coming from our recognition of the moral equality of persons. And then it goes on to, of course, list all of our things like race, gender, age, sexual orientation, county of origin, all that kind of stuff. So we're real clear about our platform. There's a lot of queer and straight folks marching for the New Party in the march, and we're real clear. I was, I used to be the co-coordinator for the New Party, so nondiscrimination is definitely right up there with, with our agenda. And what we've tried to do locally is, is bring about a political debate. So we don't have a set goal of, these are the things, and we only have one way of seeing things. You know, you come to our meetings, they're lively, full of debate of just citizens coming together in the community to say, how can we, what do we care about, and how can we start to, to move forward a progressive agenda, which is about equality, fairness, things like that. So we're working right now on a campaign finance reform effort, to try and get polit, money out of politics. We saw in the last election, folks with Citizens for Common Sense Government, you know, organizing and raising $30,000. Used to be in a city council race, you could win on $4,000 to $5,000, and it was about going door to door and talking to your neighbors. Well, all of a sudden, because of our effectiveness and a lot of the fear of, of some of the folks who do have money in our, in our community, and a lot of kind of developer and real estate interests, they came together to say, whoa, this could start to affect us. And so they raised money out of state, they, they had, you know, lots of $5,000 donations to do a real bashing campaign of the New Party. And instead of letting the folks come door to door and talk to you about, as a politician, this is what I care about. You know, it might be Gail Gucci telling you about water quality, or it might be Ron Erickson talking to you about environmental issues, or it might be, you know, one of the candidates out there who's gonna talk to you about the issues and what they, how they wanna be effective in office. And instead of allowing that debate to happen, which is what's always, you know, allowed us to elect folks to office, they put, you know, $30,000 into an ad campaign to just bash the New Party. And you might have seen it on TV, the, the folks riding their bike from Eagle Hardware with all the lumber on the back of a bicycle, you know, as if, you know, we advocate for everyone to just blow up their cars and get a bike and ride to the hardware store with all their stuff on a bicycle. So what you saw was a real, a bashing campaign, instead of talking about the issues. And I think that's exactly what we're trying to fight. It's not about money and politics to frame people as, oh, they're all New Party and they're all bad. It's about saying, no, we should be talking about the issues, we should be talking about our community, we should be talking about growth management, how do we wanna be effective and get things done in the community, as opposed to, you know, just saying, oh, they're a label, and so we're, you know, we're scared of them, we don't know them. We're really clear about who we are, about what we stand for. Unlike, you know, there's a lot of folks who relate us to the Christian Coalition, we are similar in that we have a grassroots organizing strategy. I think we're very different, however, in the fact that we're very upfront about who we are and what we stand for and what our values and issues are. And I guess that's about it. We're working on a living wage campaign. We're really working on coalition efforts. That's been something really exciting for me to see come forward. The Living Wage Coalition has folks like business and professional women's, and Montana People's Action, and the, some of the unions, and Word, and, and a lot of other groups, who've come together to say, hey, we need to, you know, stake out and talk about living wages and talk about, about the economy here locally. So if folks want to get involved in that coalition, or, as well, we're working on a campaign finance reform effort, League of Women Voters, a lot of other folks are talking to us in dialogue about how to talk about money and politics and getting money out of politics locally. So folks are interested about those, there's a sign-up sheet in the back, and there's a bunch of newsletters and pamphlets, and, and I'll be out back. And I love to talk politics, and I could talk to you all day, but I won't take your time to do that. If folks have questions that they wanna ask me, really wanna open it up for folks to ask me any questions you have about the New Party. Thanks. Yeah. So we meet every month, we have a monthly general membership meeting Tuesdays, first Tuesday of the month, which would be July, the first Tuesday in July, at 6:00 PM. And we have it at the city council chambers, which if you're in City Hall, there's the big city council conference room, and then there's the chambers is the room right next door. So that's at 6:00 PM. We also, I'm sorry, I had the coalition, I left it at home. I had the meetings for our next two coalition meetings. But if folks wanna just leave their names and numbers with me, I will call you and get you that information. Are there questions, if folks?
Alright, thanks Ren. You know, one of the things about living in Montana is that we're a rural community. And one of the important things is, kind of started community-based organizations like this, like the town meeting in our own respective communities. At the first town meeting, I was introduced to a man named Panzi Bradshaw, and he's from Dillon, Montana. And he is actually from the Bay Area, so we kind of had something in common, because that's where I'm from. And anyway, we hit it off, but he is from Dillon, Montana, and he's here to start, to speak about building rural queer communities and what you can do. He started something called Queer Central in Dillon, Montana, of all places. And so I'm gonna ask him to speak. Here's Panzi.
Thank you. I guess I should start telling you why I came to Montana. I never thought I would come here. I always thought if I came here, I might be killed. It's, it's a confession, okay? I was called to Montana 11 years ago by the Religious Society of Friends, the Quaker community of Montana. Their largest body, their largest gathering in this state, called the Montana Gathering of Friends, were discussing issues of concern to lesbian and gay people. And they had no idea of who to ask to speak about these concerns. And so they sent out inquiries across the country, and an invitation ended up being sent to me, where I lived then, in South Florida, where I grew up. And I came here at their invitation, and I traveled around the state, to Billings, Helena, Missoula, Dillon, who knows where else, little towns in between. I spoke to college groups, I spoke to church groups, I spoke to Quaker groups, women's groups. And we had a moderately successful experience, including a dance, where same-sex people danced together for the first time in Dillon. It was a very touching experience. And a lot of straight men asked me to dance that night. And I remember being really moved by that, that I was not lynched and I was pretty out then. I moved back to the Bay Area after my visit here. And while in the Bay Area, really learned a lot about queer consciousness, and where I wanted to go with that. One of the things that has really impressed me about being a queer, and I've shared this with some of you this weekend, is that at the age of 43, I have not yet spent half my life as a gay man. And that's a horrible thing to think about. I have witnessed the death of all of my peers but one, the group, the group of people that I came out with 21 years ago. And to me, the closet is more killing to us than any disease. So my goal has been, for as long as I can remember, but especially in the last 10 years, to bring queer people out of the closet. Not to drag them. But if they wanna do drag, I support that. But to let them see that it's alright to be who you are. Now, if I can be who I am in Dillon, Montana, I'm sure you can do it anywhere. I work in Dillon now, I, I moved to Dillon. I, I knew during my first visit that I would come back here someday. I loved it that much. And I work for myself, I'm a childcare provider, and I'm a nanny in Dillon. And I know a lot of people say to me, does your employer know you're that way? And of course, she does know. I take care of a three-year-old boy, and we've been working together since he was 14 months old. And he knows how to say, hey, queen, with the best of them. Dillon is an interesting community, and, and I really can't speak to the rest of the world, but I can speak to Dillon's issues. We have a small, out lesbian and gay community. I'd say six to eight people moves and flows, and some come, some go, but we have a little heart of about six lesbian and gay people there. And others who are in the closet, for a while, we've even had a very active social group who met in a local bar on Friday nights and played darts together. A bunch of straight people up in the front, and the queers all in the back. And it was remarkably enlightening for some folks that we were so social and, and a lot of fun to be with. The interesting thing, though, is that I can't seem to get more queer people to come out. But I've gotten a lot of straight people to come out. I have more intimate friends in the straight community, who are saying, I am so excited about what you're doing. And we can't seem to get the closet people to, to come out. We know they're there. There's 5,000 people in Dillon, which means that at least 500 have to be that way. Okay? But if you go by more radical estimates, which I go by, at least 1,000 people need to come out, maybe more. Because I don't believe there's anything as such as straight and gay. I think the world is round, and so are our sexual preferences. The way I do outreach in rural Montana is, I live the most honest life that I can. When somebody says something homophobic and I'm within earshot, even if they're not speaking to me, I address that issue right then and right there. And I don't, don't put up with homophobia. It's not acceptable. I'm not asking you to burn police cars, or to... I've done it. I burned tires on the mayor's front yard. And I've thrown paint bombs at preachers like Fred Phelps. Okay? Because I believe that unless people see how angry we can be, they'll never understand where our middle ground is. A lot of people say to me, you have a lot of anger issues. Well, I'm tired of being sweet to people. I really am. And I've not been too aggressive in Dillon. The most aggressive, and it's, and it's very hard for people to deal with, is, is that confrontation right there. The other wonderful thing that I get to do is, I get to speak at Western Montana College a lot. And I speak to psychology classes, to literature classes, any place where we can find an excuse for queerness. Literature classes are great. Because of course, we all know, all writers were straight. Because of course, we all know all writers were straight. So that's a starting point for me. And I, I love to be confrontational in the classroom. One of my favorite things to do, and it works every time, is before I start speaking, I walk around the classroom and I just begin to write on the chalkboard the names of all the people in history that I assume are queer. I don't care if they were. Because people assumed I was straight for years and they were wrong. Okay? So I write on the chalkboard all the names. And you know the two names that students find most offensive? Can anyone guess? Barbie? And Ken. Number three on the list is Joan of Arc. Go figure. But to me, it just seems so logical. And the morning that I woke up and I thought that, "My God, they're never going to get married. He's a fag. They've been driving around in that car for years with Skipper. What's this all about?" And when you raise that issue to a classroom of college students, they're horrified. So when I get to the real mean of things, they melt down. I don't want to take very much more time because I think you have the gist of it. It's about being who you are, what you are, where you are. Very powerful theologian, before Christianity, Hillel, says in a wonderful book of sayings, Pirke Avot, "If I am not for myself, who is for me? And if I am only for myself, what am I? And if not now, when? It's right here and it's right now. You will never have another opportunity." To that end, started as a joke, I started Queer Central. That was my email address, Queer Central. And people said, "Hey, you should take that somewhere." So Queer Central has now become a website. It's still under construction. Its real intent is to do outreach to people in Beaverhead County, which is the largest county in Montana, and people in Dillon especially, and especially to students on the campus of Western Montana College. There's a girth of queers there waiting to come out. And next October, we have a program planned for National Coming Out Day with the help of the Dino students, who's very queer-positive. And last year, I should mention, we had a lesbian and gay film festival, which had six to 12 people at each film. Step forward. It wasn't just me. And we'll be doing the queer film festival again this year. Even the straight people who attended, who weren't my friends, said that the films were really wonderful, provocative, emotional, educational. So I think that no matter where you live in Montana, it's about your honesty issues and it's about being present in the moment with these people. I think that straight people in Montana are a lot more loving and accepting than we give them credit for. Are there questions?
Yeah.
Yeah?
You said that when people say unkind things or homophobic things in public, you stop them right away. I think a lot of us...
Yes.
A lot of us stay in the closet because we're afraid that somebody might say something ugly or humiliating in public. And we don't know how to handle it. You have the words and wisdom on how to handle that destruction. We need to help each other learn to do this because queer people are tired of it.
Yeah, it does. And to that end, I'm not opposed to using violence. I, I'm a very peaceful person by nature, but when my life is threatened, I will respond in kind. And I think it's inappropriate, the time has come for people to understand that we are not going to let people abuse us any longer. And if abuse starts, the abuse starts with language. And I say, "That's not appropriate." You may not call me a fag. I'm using the straight person on the wall. You may not call me a fag. You may not refer to other people as fags unless you're our friends. And they get all upset and intense and usually they shut up right then and there. A queer has spoken to them and they spoke to them in a way that they did not expect. And that surprises people. And sometimes that same person will apologize and say, "You know, I never thought about that." A fag joke isn't funny. A dyke joke isn't funny when you're using us for humor. So I go for it. If I see a person being abused physically, I pick up the biggest thing I can get my hands on and I use it. And I have. Queer Nation in San Francisco was one of the most wonderful experiences for me. We went after bashers one night with two-by-fours. And the police had to intervene. Over here?
I just wanted to say in response to that question about what do you do if you, you know, our fear keeps us from saying something the first time somebody makes a joke or a comment, that they might attack, they might retaliate. Well, I'm already being attacked when somebody makes a foul or rude or sarcastic statement against myself or anybody else in regards to preference, sexual preference, color, religious, whatever. When that, when that first comment comes, I'm already being attacked. So for me to stand up and say something, I'm taking a risk that I might get hit harder, but I know how to walk away or I know how to fight back. And I have those choices. But to sit there and take it, I know how to sit there and take it too and I'm, and I don't need to do that anymore. I know. I do not have to sit down and take anything from anybody that I don't want to.
You are absolutely correct. And the worst thing that can happen is that you could be killed. Okay?
The worst thing that could happen is your spirit could be broken and still live.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
Because we're going to die anyway.
Yeah. Half of the battle has already been won because you're used to being insulted. You're used to hearing fag jokes. You're used to being abused. You've had it happen in the past. So all you need to do is replay in your own mind how you've been attacked in the past and role model with someone else what you thought about four hours later, how you really wanted to have responded to that. And practice it. If nothing else, practice it with yourself in front of a mirror. Get used to jumping on it right away. Make it a reactive response. You call me a fag it, I'm going to be in your face. And you know what? I'm going to tell your mommy to sit and kick your ass. And if you practice it and make it a reactive response, you will be so empowered by your ability to not even have to think about your reaction, but to just whip it out and nail them with it, that people are going to recognize early on that you are a horse to be contended with. And you won't have any problems.
And you know, you do get responses from people like, "Well, you would win so much more if you would use honey instead." You know, "Well, I'm tired of being walked over. I really am. And I don't want to go there." I did just want to add, before I forget, your hand is there. There's another half to Queer Central, and she's in the audience somewhere. I can't see any of you very well. Her name is Dr. Jody Schwain and she does the lesbian half of Queer Central. It's not a job that I do alone, so I hope that, wherever she lives... You have a question?
Do you have any problems with gay bashing in a small town like that?
Well, you know, I have never been bashed in Dillon. It has not happened. I have never been verbally assaulted outside of a classroom. Okay? And I have been verbally assaulted in the classrooms of Western Montana College, but I hold my own there because I have the podium. I have the pointer. And I can defend myself. Yes?
I wonder if there isn't a middle ground between being passive on the one hand and aggressive on the other, simply being assertive, unless of course it's self-defense against physical violence or violence against some other person.
You're absolutely right about that. And my intention is not to have you go out into the streets and randomly strike people. My intention is that, and I said this earlier, I want to show you how extreme I can be. And I want the more peaceful queers to be as peaceful as they can be because somewhere between us is a middle ground. But if they don't know how angry we are, they will never really understand us. They will never understand what it means to feel the oppression that we experience every second of our day, whether we're in the closet or out of the closet, what we're bombarded with on television every day, on the radio every day, in the newspapers every day. I am insulted by straight culture. Not in my workplace. In the workplace. Are you waving at me or...
I'm Nick.
Hi, Nick.
You interviewed me yesterday. And I just wanted to say that retaliation doesn't always have to be violence.
No.
When Panzi and I talked yesterday, one of the things we ended up talking about, and I was nasty to our governor. A year ago, he signed into law, making it illegal for men to marry men and women to marry women. It was already illegal for men to marry men and women to marry women in Montana, but he did it again. In my letter, he sort of responded, "How dare you think I'm a bigot." And Panzi said, "Well, I invited him to my wedding." Everybody who gets married in this state, you know, they're not legal weddings. Every time, send the governor an invitation. Let him know how many of us are getting married.
Yeah, right. There's another really positive thing that you can do, and not about the queer marriage issue, but instead of responding violently, what we used to do in Queer Nation in San Francisco was kiss-ins. If people were thrown out of an establishment for holding hands or simply showing some public display of affection between same-gender couples, we would have a kiss-in. Pardon?
The top end.
The top end.
Those people would be kicked out of the top end.
Yeah, where were the lesbian Avengers this year? And we would, we would go to those places, 50 to 100 couples, and start making out. Because if they think it's bad to hold hands, wait till we're making love. Yes? I'm sorry, is there a hand? No. All done? Thank you.
I think Panzi is an excellent example of how one person can make a difference in rural Montana. Our next speaker is David Herrera. He's with Gay Men's Task Force on HIV and AIDS for the state. He's been in the state for a number of years working on this issue. And so he'll speak about the task force and about some of the state funding or lack thereof that Montana gives to this type of work.
Oh my God, those lights are bright. Welcome, everybody. I think this is a great turnout and I want to just sort of applaud you guys for coming out here and for Justin for putting this in. I'm outspoken to putting this together because I think this is great. I think we need to be doing more of this stuff all around Montana and to bring the communities together. And that's really a lot of what, what I've have worked along with other people here in the audience at doing is really about, the work that I do is about community building because I think ultimately that's how we're going to end up saving lives. And not just from HIV, but from homophobia and substance abuse, breast cancer and other illnesses that are affecting our communities. But like Justin said, my name is David Herrera and I've been doing this work, God, for over 10 years at least, and sometimes it seems like much longer. And I got involved back in California in the early 80s when nobody knew anything about this disease and moved out here to Montana and realized that HIV was going to end up affecting Montana, just like it had already started to affect states all around the country. But it really wasn't until probably 1992, after losing several dear and close friends of mine to this disease, that I really sort of made a commitment to myself to continue this work, not just for me, but really to, to continue the work that they had begun. I couldn't think of any other way that I could honor their memory but by continuing the work that they had done. People like Victor Phillips and Paul Clark, some of you that may remember them. And so that's really what I think kept me going. And I sort of got involved in prevention. And at that time, there wasn't a lot of funding going towards, you know, gay men's health issues in the state of Montana. It was really, a lot of the stuff was, was not effective and nothing was really being done. And so I decided that, that we needed to do something. So, so there was some funding that came available, not a lot, but we went after it. And the first thing that I did was develop the Gay Men's Task Force because I knew that, that I needed men from around the state to be working on the same issue, to find out what was going on in the different communities. And so we formed the Gay Men Task Force back in 1992, back just, you know, seven guys that met four times a year and to decide what was it that needed to be happening in order to keep men safe and healthy. And it's amazing how the organization has grown since then. But one of the first things that we did was we met with the State Health Department, with the director at that time, and went and told them, "Look, this is what's going on. Over 80% of the AIDS cases are coming from this population and you're doing nothing. This is appalling." And we used basically their own numbers. It's like we didn't make these up. These are the numbers that you have given us, that you are reporting. And how can you justify this? And so they said, "You're right." And they increased the funding because they had no choice when it was presented to them that way. And so it's just sort of been a struggle over the years and there has been some changes. But a lot of the changes have come really from the communities basically saying, "This is what needs to happen." And it's amazing that the Centers for Disease Control and the federal government have started to do that. They've started to listen to the communities to realize what needs to be happening because for the most part, what's been done in the past has not worked. So one of the, the things again that the, the task force does is not just really dealing around HIV, but what I saw was really a lot of the isolation and homophobia, that that was really what was killing us here in our state. And I remember going and speaking in Broaddus, Montana, several years ago. God, that was probably like in 1991. Small community in southeastern Montana. And I'd been asked to come and speak about HIV and, and I got there that afternoon. It was to be speaking to a high school, the school assembly, and then also to be speaking that evening to the community, along with some other speakers on, on this issue. And when I arrived there that afternoon, I knew that there was a problem when I saw the sheriff standing at the, at the doors of this school. And the people that had brought me, they like, you know, took me off to the side and said, "We have a problem." And I said, "What's, what's going on?" And they said, "Well, between..." They had announced it on the radio that I was going to be speaking and the couple of days before. before. And as some of you may know, the Christian Coalition is very well organized in eastern Montana, and they had gotten wind of this. And at that time, I was actually on the board of Pride. And so they, I think, had all of our names, knew all the board members. And so when they found out that I was gonna be speaking in Broadus, Montana, in one of the schools, they just mobilized the phones and started contacting all the school board members. So all these school board members were there that afternoon and were meeting with the principal. And of course, they said-- the principal wanted to meet with me. And I said, "Jeez, I never even got called to the principal's office when I was in school. So this is the first." So I went to talk to the principal. And so he wanted to find out what I was gonna be speaking on, exactly what was gonna be done. And I, you know, went through the whole program, the agenda. I gave him my agenda. And then he asked, you know, if-- goes, "Well, are you involved with, you know, with Pride?" And I said, "Yes, I am, but that's not what you are asking me to speak on here. I'm here to speak about, you know, HIV and prevention, not my orientation." And so he said, "Well," you know, that explained his situation, and he would make the decision. So we had to go and wait. And the decision was that I would not speak to the school, but that the other speakers that I had brought, people with HIV, that they would get to speak. And I had a video with some youth and some queer youth speaking about the impact that it made on them. So that at least got done. And then they promoted that I come to-- that they come and see me speak that evening. Well, as it turned out, the evening presentation was, I think, probably doubled as a result of that controversy. And everybody did, especially a lot of the school youth, which was great. And they all then came up and said they didn't know what the big deal was, that they thought it was just ridiculous. So that was really good to hear them say that. But it really demonstrated, again, just, you know, the homophobia that really does exist. And I think we tend to forget how difficult it is in some of these smaller communities. And I was reminded a couple of years ago at Pride, hearing about this older lesbian couple living in eastern Montana, when they heard about the Pride, that there was like a dance. And what an impact, and how amazing that was to them, because you see, whenever they wanted to dance together, they did it in the privacy of their own home and by shutting and closing all the windows and drawing all the blinds and making sure that nobody could see in. And then they would turn on the radio, and they would dance together. And hearing that just sort of, in concrete, just sort of sent the message, just what we're dealing with, you know, the isolation that gays and lesbians face even today here in our state. And so that's really, I think, what I saw as part of what the focus of the task force was to do, was to address those issues. And I've been really proud of what this group of men has been able to do, because we've done just that. And we've done it through the different retreats that we put on, the workshops, any type of-- I'm always looking at different opportunities to bring men together in order to realize that they're not alone. And I think we've been successful at that, especially with the retreats that we've done. I remember we did-- this is now the fourth year, I guess, that we've done retreats. And just hearing the thank you letters from some of the men that write in is just amazing at the impact that they have had, just to know that they're not alone. I remember a letter that I received from one of the retreats. It was one of the gentlemen living up in the High Line of the northeastern Montana, and how he talked about after attending one of the retreats, he made the decision that he'd been struggling with wanting to come out to his employer. And after this retreat, he decided that he was gonna do that. He worked for a district attorney, and they happened to be driving, you know, the vehicle, which, by the way, I'm not sure that I recommend coming out to your employer in a speeding car. But I'm always amazed at how many people actually do that, come out that way, to families or otherwise. But anyway, he was driving with his employer down the highway, and his employer just asked, you know, "Well, how'd your weekend go? What'd you do?" And he decided to tell him, "Well, I attended a retreat, and it was a retreat for gay men, because I am, you know, gay." And there was sort of silence. But his boss just said, "Oh, well, that's great." And, you know, again, did not-- it wasn't a negative experience. And he didn't react, and then he, you know-- at least he didn't like run him off the road or anything. So-- but he said that he felt so great, that he finally had that off of his chest, that he could now finally be honest and open, you know, with his employer. And I think it's stories like that that really demonstrate that, you know, we are making a difference. And I think that it is important that we continue to do that. And that's probably what we will do. It's what we're looking at-- the future goals of the organization really is now getting calls to come to other states. I was just in North Dakota about a month ago and helping them out, because there's nothing going on for gay men in North Dakota. And they're just amazed at what we've been able to do here in Montana. And so I think that's really exciting to find-- to be able to help our surrounding states, the Dakotas and Idaho and Wyoming, and to get them to mobilize and to realize and show the gay men there that they can do something, that there's a lot that they can do. Because I think that's part of what you need to do, is kind of show and share the vision and let people know what is possible, and then get them to own it and then to do it, because it can be done. And so that's really exciting. And that's, I think, where we're gonna be, you know, headed. Before I sort of wrap up, I wanted to sort of plug. One of the things that we do each year in order to help us sort of with the planning is to do a survey for the gay and bisexual men's community. And so we will have some of the surveys out during the break. So if anybody hasn't filled one of these, please do so, because it really provides us with the information that we can then take to the state and to show that this is what needs to be happening, and these are the issues and concerns that men are facing. And last-- I know that there's several task force members that are here. Here in Missoula, we have Terry Seere and Justin, who are members of the task force. And we will probably be looking-- we have-- we'll probably have some vacancies on the task force this fall, so that if anybody is interested to contact, you know, one of the task force members or myself and to learn more about it. So I want to thank everybody again for being here. This is great.
Thank you.